Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order supers- excuse me, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting.
Thank you, Jean. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of November 18, 2020. Are there any, if you all had a chance to read the minutes?
Yep.
Any questions or additions or deletions?
I have a, I have a, I have a deletion on page one at the very bottom where it says, Jay Buban read the public hearing notice. We didn't have a public hearing that, it was just a determination, so I think we need to...
All right, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Any other amendments? It doesn't look like, so would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes from November 18, 2020?
I make a motion that we approve the amended minutes of November 18, 2020.
Okay. And so now we'll take a roll call vote. Is Tom here?
Yes. Yes, my vote is yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Marge, is she here?
No, Marge cannot be here tonight.
Okay. I vote yes. Bill?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Ah, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
So we're at unanimous, so the motion was made and passed that we accept the minutes as amended. Okay. So next we...
Excuse me, Liz, just one second. There's a caller three. Did somebody call in? If so, could you identify yourself so I can add your name?
This is Mary Alhousi that called in.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the public hearing for a notice of special permit. Do you have that notice to read, Diane?
I'm not, I'm not the clerk. Is this Mike?
Oh.
Mike Young is the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the notice in front of me, so...
All right, I can read, I have it.
It's saying he's the clerk.
You have my permission to read it.
Want me to read it, Jean?
Yep, sorry, I was just trying to... John, I think you're still the presenter if you want to get your plans up while I read the public hearing notice. Do you have the legal notice? I have it. I have it.
Okay.
All right. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing virtually on Wednesday, March 17, 2021, at 6:35 PM on the application of Swaminathan Realty LLC. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 2005, and Chapter 24, Section 2409, sub-paragraph A through E of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use for the property located at 122 Main Street. The applicant is proposing the relocation of the canopy for the fuel islands in order to reposition parking adjacent to the convenience store. The Zoning Board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case details respecting the same will be made public by the Zoning Board of Appeals in advance of the hearing and will be posted here. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be viewed at https://www.sturbridge.gov/zoning-board-appeals/pages/recent-filings, or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome. John, are you able to resume presenting?
Sure. Just hit the share button.
Yep. So with us this evening, we have John Connell from Site Tech Engineering, and we have Kenny Patel and Mukesh Patel, and Dharmesh Patel as well, the applicants.
Hi, John, thank you. My name's John Connell. I work for Site Tech Engineering in Dartmouth. We here present a plan for a special permit for your consideration. On the screen you'll see, we show a relocated series of tanks. Does that point to show up?
Yes.
Is there any pointer?
It does.
Okay, so a little hand is there. That's a relocation of the fuel tanks there, but also proposing a relocation of the dispensers and the concrete pads associated with that in the vicinity here, as in too small additions to the existing building here. We've reconfigured all of the parking outside the front of the existing building, along with a architectural access ADA head walk, as well as the accessible parking here. The, I will show you on the drawing set here. Here is the, the existing conditions. You can see the pumps are currently located in front of the building. The parking is essentially parallel to the island here closer to Main Street and off to the sides. The proposed project is intended to improve the circulation on the site, that is, through the pumps or the dispensers, and also the access to the building and also the safety to the building up in front, providing the aisle width, that people can pull in, pull out safely, you know, either to go into the store or to get gas. We've got a notice of intent in front of the Conservation Commission. I've gone through the comments from the town planner here and, you know, Fincher. She's, it's a very accurate statement of what we're proposing, and one of the comments was that we consider prior to, prior to coming in for the planning board submission, that the Conservation Commission would like some additional EMPs, either infiltration on the site. We are decreasing overall the impervious area on the site. We're removing some pavement in the vicinity of this addition, the islands, we've trimmed some pavement in this, this area here. And certainly, yeah, we will, we'll work with the Conservation Commission during that filing to accommodate some of their requests, you know, be it infiltration. Right up front, I, I think we'd like to do, the opportune area is probably down in here to excavate some of this area and make it more like a rain garden. That, that seems to be the most feasible. The soils on the site are hydrologic soil groups C and D, which are not conducive particularly to infiltration, but we can certainly take a look and see if we can, we can do that as well. Let's go back to the landscaping in this set here. That's the existing conditions plan. Here's a landscaping plan. So we would, we would do landscaping in these open areas here in the islands.
John, we don't see that plan.
The plan hasn't caught up with you yet. We're still showing the proposed conditions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a little bit of lag.
Is that typical, is that bobbed down like that? Oh, I see, I see what I'm, I see what you're looking at up in the corner here, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I clicked on the other one. Oh, there it is.
Yep.
Okay, hopefully it catches up. Okay, yeah. So you can see the, the small circles there represent different types of proposed plantings. We've added some plantings to the north of the paved surface, also to within the islands on the site near the pumps, and then further south, that's the area that we'd, we'd like to consider for maybe a rain garden, address some of the conservation comments. I, I think that's, that would be it for a presentation. Certainly, I'd try to answer any questions that the, that the board may have, and, you know, please consider us for the special permit. Thank you.
Okay. We also did receive information from the DPW, fire inspector, conservation, building inspector, and the chief of police. Does anybody have any questions right now?
Yeah. I do.
Oh, Bill, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, which the width of the driveway by the proposed canopy entrance?
This, this width here, the southernmost entrance?
Yes.
One second, please. Okay, I'm a hard copy plan, yeah. It's about 57 feet at the center of that elongated island there, so if you, from the center point there, over to the southerly pavement edge, so 57, 58 feet.
From what, from the outside curb cut at the street side or for the parking lot side? Or if you say right center of that curb?
Yeah. Can you actually see that, the hand that I'm...
Yep.
Yeah, so from there to here is about 57, 58 feet right there.
So do you feel that there's enough room there if people are parked for fuel to people to easily access that parking lot from the Main Street without causing a traffic issue?
Sure, yeah. I, if I may, could I show the turning movements plan? Jean, is that okay if I do that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you have that plan here.
I'll let you know when it shows up.
This is a plan that...
There it is.
Okay. This is a plan that was, was requested to show what you were, I think what you were requesting as well is to show a passenger, how that would get in, it would navigate those, the dispensers, and then exit, and then you'll see the, the turning movements, the sharpness movements would be, you know, coming from Main Street on the northerly entrance, taking that and coming back out in the, from the southerly, southerly entrance there, but all the vehicles, the way the pumps are configured or the dispensers are configured there with, that they can go on either side, that that would, that would greatly reduce the queuing or the stacking of vehicles out towards Main Street. That was the, you know, one of the reasons that, that we chose that configuration, that certainly we don't want anyone backing up on, on Main Street. This would give them four different rows there to pull into, and then certainly cars could queue up behind them, but...
Right, that's at the, at the...
It's a backside movement.
It just seems it's crowded at that entrance with that, with cars being there pulling out, pulling in, it seems a little crowded in that corner.
In here?
I had a question about that too. Are there going to be signs directing the traffic? It seems like you have three lanes going one direction and one lane going another. Are there going to be signs like in one way and out?
Each, each entrance is, is, you know, in and out. The arrows were only shown, those aren't, wouldn't be markings on the pavement, those are only to show the direction in which that analysis was, was drawn in, so the vehicles would be moving from south to north through the site. The same thing, the same thing could be drawn from, from the north entrance further south through the, through that concrete pad, so, yeah.
So there's no real direction, a flow of direction, it's just whichever way the people are going?
It wa, I anticipate people will use both entrances, but we have a 28-foot aisle width there, right in here, which is, is more than adequate for two-way traffic, as well as, again, that entrance being 55 to 57 feet there. There's plenty of room to navigate and maneuver there. It's, I don't, I don't envision any problem at all. The, the, the vehicles will be able to come out, and they'll be able to tee themselves in to the intersection at Main Street to look both ways. The vehicles will be at a 90-degree angle to Main Street like that. It's a, it's a safe, it's really a safe flow for the traffic. There's plenty of width there.
So what is the, what is the depth from the curb cut at the street side to your five-foot measurement from the pad to the inside curb cut in the parking lot? The island there, there's no width on that island.
The, the island is about 14 feet wide, and then you have that, again, that five feet, which brings you to, you know, 19, 20 feet out to the, 20 feet out to the edge of berm there, or the roadway, the roadway curbing.
Is it the same island that's there now? Is it going to remain the same island?
Yeah, nothing's changing with the island, no proposed changes there.
It's the same island that's there right now?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I have one, this is Tom. I have one with respect to...
No, Tom gone.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Fidelis. This is Tom. I had one question on the foliage that you're going to plant in the, I want to be sure that the foliage is low enough so it doesn't interfere with the visibility of people, for people coming out. That's one of the annoyances you run into quite often, is that they planted something that you can't see through. So I wanted to be sure that that's low foliage that's going to be planted on the island.
That's a, that's a really good question. Yeah, these, to my knowledge, my boss had picked out in accordance, in conjunction with the landscape architect, they had picked out these, what you'll see here, the, the trees are in the site, they tended to put these, now, let me see, these roses and things like that, so they, they should be low enough that in this, in this area, there will be no visibility problem with Main Street, but on the site, the smaller, the smaller plantings tend to be in, in these islands where visibility could be obscured, but if you look, if someone keyed in at, at Main Street coming either, either way, that, the, the existing island, we're, we're planting nothing further in the existing island on Main Street. All of our plantings are on the site, so nothing would obscure the visibility coming into or out of this, heading out of the site from Main Street. They're essentially internal plantings on the site.
Okay, then, does it say planter with respect to one of the, one of the circle in the middle says planter? But is that something that's existing or...
Those are existing right now, Tom.
That's an existing condition.
Okay. All right, then, thank you very much. That's good.
In fact, I could just pop that up on Google Earth. This is a Google Earth street view. You can see the, the utility pole and then the, the planters there that, that you mentioned. Like a half, half of a wooden barrel.
I'm not seeing anything, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're, those are basically like half, half-barrel type plantings. They might be a foot and a half or two feet, two feet maybe off the ground, and then flowering plants in them. That, that would not, again, they're existing, but they, they will have no impact on site visibility or sightline there.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so this is Fidelis. I, I don't have a question, just want to make sure I fully understand. So the canopy is going to be moving to the right, okay? And the size of the canopy is also going to be increasing from the original size, right? That's, that's what it is?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Bill again. Yep.
Go ahead, Bill.
Is there, is there any physical reason why that canopy and those pumps can't be put into the property further and away from the street?
It's, it really, it really has to do with, the further we get up there, the more of a forced turn that the people will have to make. You can see how if we were to shift that further, further east, that the further you go up into the site, the more difficult it is to make that, that turn between the pumps or that concrete pad, the dispensers there in the building. This, this gave people, we felt, the best chance to get in there and without excessive maneuvering, we felt it was the best layout that, that we could put before you. The safest too, as well.
So maneuvering what, as far as to the south side here? On that side of the pumps, is that what you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You mean as far as maneuvering getting in cars from the Main Street on the south side of the, the parking lot?
Yeah, well, I, I think from both sides. I think if you're coming in from the south, the further you have to go up into that site, that, and it just becomes a more difficult maneuver to get in and out of that. Even, even the north, the north would be coming from, in from the north here, it would be, you know, you'd start to have, I think, more, more conflicts at the throat here where, where right now people tend to be going through, and it's, it's a, it's a smoother, a smoother flow, a smoother pattern through this, this area here where there are potential, you know, any potential conflict.
Right, that's if they go out the northerly entrance. If they go out the southerly one, they have to drive all the way around the pumps and that'll plug that side up more.
Oh, you're, you're talking about someone that would do this? You're talking about someone that would come from the south side, enter the pumps, and then try to pull a U-turn?
Well, no, if somebody came from the store, parking in front of the store, and went and went, leave out the south side, they'll have to drive around the pumps, and that'd cause more traffic in that area where people entering in, the pumps being there close to the driveway.
Yeah.
It just appears it's going to be kind of crowded there.
Yeah, I, I can see, you know, the people pulling out with...
Yep.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, people backing out from, from in front, definitely, you know, I think, I think the pattern will develop that they'll pull out that north entrance. Unless they're going to get gas, then they might pull out and back through the pumps, but, you know, that, that could, you know, as they back out, they could go up and around the pump too, but again, it, it really, I think that those, those people who back in front would tend to realize that they should be going out that north entrance.
That is a very interesting question. This is Tom again. Is there room typically when, if, if there's not a pump open where I can get at the left-hand side of my car, which would be, if I come in the south entrance, I could either go pump line four, the fourth one up from the road, or the second one up from the road, and be at, have access to the left-hand side of my car?
Yeah.
If those are filled, have I got room to go all the way around the pumps and come back in the other way in order to get the left-hand side of my car into aisle three, the third one out from the street? Do you see what I mean? Have I got room to make a turn?
Yep, sure. You're talking about coming up here and then, and sweeping around, pulling here, the same thing here.
Yeah, I can't see what you're pointing at, but...
Okay, yeah. In a nutshell, I'd say yes, you know, and I can add that to the template, certainly. I can add that movement to the, to the site, you know, with that template, but if you were to take that tighter template down at the street, at Main Street, you can see the passenger vehicle, their turning movements in the outside of the vehicle, you'll, you'll be able to make that movement because the throat, the throat here or the aisle width here is sufficient. That is... Um, that is, that's twenty-nine feet roughly right here, twenty-nine to thirty feet from the edge of the pad to, uh, the sidewalk here or the new walkway. So yes, uh, someone will be able to, to pull up if, if those pumps, uh, as you stated, the, um, that you have to pull in on the left-hand side, if those areas that the, this side here, this side here are not available, um, you could go around and then pull a U, make a U-turn to get into the opposite side of those pumps and still have, uh, sufficient room to maneuver.
Okay. And the other question on the traffic, um, you've got automobiles, the arrow way to the right of your drawing here, uh, down on the bottom, that seems to be out on the street?
Yep.
Is that, is that a cars waiting to get in or is that property that you have control of?
Yeah, no, that's, those aren't cars waiting to get in. Uh, the arrow is just to show the direction in which I drew that, that turning analysis so that, that's a car, uh, going from south to north and then turning into the site. Um, so it's not, it's not to show that people will be backed up on the street, it's only to show that they can make that maneuver and, and show a passenger car in relation to the curbing as they, as they come into the site. And it, and it's, it's done in, uh, I think it was about ten, ten foot, uh, fifteen-foot intervals, so there's a lot of overlap. You, you see, um, you see a snapshot of that car every, every ten feet, say, fifteen feet.
I can, I understand that, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one more question. What, what's the, where's the, what's the location of the underground tanks?
The tanks will be up, uh, right in this area here below these, uh, partially below these spaces here.
Okay, and, uh, how about the delivery point? When the tankers come to deliver, where, where do they make the delivery?
My, my understanding, you know, is they, they could, there's sufficient room to maneuver. I, I don't know the delivery times, but quite often with these gas stations, they're, they're, um, off-peak. So there is, uh, you know, again, this layout has been designed to accommodate that, that vehicle, you know, that tanker that may come in via the, the south or north entrance. The aisles are plenty wide and then the turning radii, he could come in either direction, um, and, and navigate, um, navigate, dock, fill up and then exit without any problem. Regarding the hours, I, I do not know the hours, the typical hours of delivery, but my experience, um, with similar, um, installations on, on, um, you know, in, in different towns and with different vendors, they, they usually schedule these off-peak so that that will not interfere with their business.
Thank you, Fidelis. Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not at all. It looks like a much better design and much safer design than what was there currently. Uh, so I would, uh, I have no problem with it whatsoever.
Diane, do you have any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. I have two. One, did you go to the design review committee yet?
Not yet, Liz. We'll do that before they get to standing.
Okay, and the other one is, how many, um, pump, gas pumps are there?
There's, um, right now there are four dispensers and there's a pump on each side, so there would be eight, eight total. Um, four, four dispensers, but there's a, there's a pump on each side. So you could, you could fuel up on either side, so that would be eight, eight, uh, stations of fuel.
Okay. Any more questions or any comments from, is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question or speak?
Let us check, Liz.
Is there anyone on the public line that has any comments about the public hearing for Lucky Mart?
There's no one on the line.
Okay. Um, we haven't done this in so long. We close the public hearing and then talk about the findings, is that, is that what we're gonna do?
Yep. Yep.
All right.
I'm, I'm making motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, any...
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So now we have to take a person by person vote. Um, Bill?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Case. The public hearing is closed and now we need to talk about the findings. Would anybody like to start? Diane?
Yes, I don't understand what you want, a motion for the find?
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what you want?
Yes.
We need to describe the finding first.
Well, um, I real, I will, I don't think that this, um, will be more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood. In fact, I think the project, um, will actually be better because, um, it's the parking, there'll be more, um, there'll be, the location will allow for better parking and for better ADA, uh, parking, um, and the flow will be better and, well, why don't I read, um, why don't I read what I have and then we can go from there if you want? I, I make...
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Okay. I make a motion to find pursuant to chapter twenty point zero five and chapter twenty-four point zero nine, A to E of the zoning bylaw to expand, change or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure of the uses of the property located at one-twenty-two Main Street at the proposal by Swan and Na- 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 Minrin Realty LLC for the relocation of the canopy to the fuel island to reposition parking adjacent to the convenience store. The project proposed by the applicant will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use since the change in canopy location will allow for better ADA parking spaces and pedestrian flow into the building. It does not appear that the new location of the canopy will create any safety issues. The proposed construction will actually result in a slight decrease in impervious surface and additional mitigation plantings will be installed.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's first, uh, motion has been made and seconded, so we'll take a roll call vote again, and I will start this time. I'll start with, uh, Tom.
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Um, you know, it...
I, Diane, say yes.
Yes. Uh, Bill?
No.
Okay, and, uh, myself is yes. Okay. And now, Diane, you want to...
Yep, I'll do it. I think, I make a motion to grant the special permit for the relocation of the canopy for the fuel island to reposition parking adjacent to the convenience store as shown on the plan entitled Site Layout, Sun Layout for Swan and Na- Minrin Realty LLC Gas Station Convenience Store Modification, one-twenty-two Main Street, proposed by Site Tech and Civil and Environmental Engineering, where use planning. Plan date, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty. File number twenty dash seven-five-nine-four. Revision date, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who was that?
Michael.
Uh, Mike.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second, so I'll take a roll call. I will start with Fidelis.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bill?
Uh, yeah, no, no, sorry, no.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself is yes. So the motion passes. Um, are we all set then?
Yep, you're all set.
Yep, go in peace.
Thank you, John.
Um, so that, it's, it's okay, that, that's been approved?
Yes, that's been approved, yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much to the board, uh, very much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Can you put Mary's plan up there? Oh, I froze up over here. Oh my gosh, I won't do it.
And next we're gonna have, uh, a determination for Alan and Mary Hussey of sixty-five Westwood Drive.
Yes, so, um, can you reduce that a little bit so that, get the... So Alan and Mary are on the phone, but they don't have the technology to log on to the meeting, so I told them that I would explain their plan for them. So in your packet you have, there's the actual survey of when this property was divided on Westwood Drive, and you'll see that their frontage is broken into two areas. In one section, they have twenty-one, or a little over twenty-eight feet, excuse me, and on the other side they have a little over ninety feet. So they have, actually, I'm giving you the wrong, um, footage. I have a hard time reading this small print here. In total, they have...
I just have a question. Where is the road?
Janay, can you put the survey instead, please? Hold on, we'll put the survey up. Okay. So you can see there's Westwood Drive, can you put the, yeah, here's Westwood Drive down here, and you see that at the end of this cul-de-sac here on Westwood Drive, there's about forty feet of frontage going in there, and then all the way down here on this end of Westwood Drive, there's over ninety feet of frontage. And they've built their house on this tw- a little over twenty-one acre parcel. So the home was built in nineteen seventy-five and this plan was endorsed by the planning board, um, sometime prior to that. In nineteen eighty-one, the town changed the definition of frontage to say that you needed to have contiguous frontage. So that's the only non-conformity with this law is that the frontage is not contiguous. It seems to me that when they divided this land, they probably left this for maybe a residential subdivision that would have one way in and one way out. But the Husseys purchased the land and have purchased on, uh, excuse me, built only one home on this entire tract. Can you go to the other plan now, Janay? And so you can see this plan is, um, it's flipped, so Westwood is over here, where Janay's pointing now, there's Westwood Drive. So you can see the, there's, um, an existing home, a barn and a shed on this property. So the shed is a hundred and twenty feet off the rear property line and about three hundred feet off of the front property line. So what the Husseys are proposing is to build a carport, um, onto the existing shed. And in your packet, they included photographs. Do you have the photos here? We'll put the photo up in one second.
That's an example of the, of the carport?
They gave an example of the carport and then there's a photo of their existing shed, and where the two cars are parked next to the existing shed is where the carport will be located. So it's in that kind of driveway area that they'll be adding the carport. Sorry, we're froze up here, we can't bring it up.
No, I got it.
You got it?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I thought you were froze.
I just paused the screen.
Oh, okay. Patience. Okay. So you can see in this photo on your, I guess it would be on your right-hand side, where the two vehicles are parked there next to the shed, that's the location of the carport. So it'd be going in, in that driveway area up against the shed, and the one, the other photo is an example of what they're planning to build. So it's, certainly meets all of the setbacks, it's well under the lot coverage, actually their coverage even with the carport will only be about one percent, so, because the, the parcel is so large. It's like, the only non-conformity is that the frontage isn't contiguous, they have more than enough frontage, they have more than enough area, they meet all the setbacks. So that is an explanation of what they're doing. They are on the phone if you have any questions for them.
Um, I also should make note that we did get a Department of Public Works and Safari Department responded and do not have any, um, concerns or issues with this project. So if anybody has any questions, I'll start with Fidelis. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions at all.
Oh, Tom?
No, I haven't, thank you.
Bill?
No, ma'am, no question.
Diane?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions either, so I guess someone could make a motion. Uh...
Oh, yeah, we have your book in front of you.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to grant the determination to Alan and Mary Hussey for the property located at sixty-five Westwood Drive as requested to install a eighteen-feet by eighteen-feet carport as shown on a hand-on plan, um, by the applicant. The proposal does not intensify the existing or create additional non-conformities and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the application and plan.
I'll second that.
Okay. Um, any comments? All right, we can vote. Uh, Tom?
Yes, I approve.
Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Um, um, Bill?
Yes.
Um, Diane?
Yes, yes.
Myself is yes, uh, so it's unanimous. So the motion passes.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
Alan and Mary, you're all set. I'll give a, this determination to the building inspector tomorrow so you can apply for your building permit.
Okay, thank you, Jane, thank you very much to the board.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Hey, does anybody have trouble getting on?
No.
Is anyone still there?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I, I couldn't get it up to work, I don't know why I couldn't get on, and we'll have to do something. I'll stop by, okay, I'll call...
I'll stop by, okay, I'll call you, but, uh, it wouldn't load, couldn't, don't know why, but anyway. Have a nice weekend.
Well, don't get off yet, we haven't adjourned yet.
Alright, any old business or new business?
Um, just, I just want to remind everybody that the town elections is, um, April 12th and I am on the ballot for reelection.
Okay.
A good reason to go.
Thanks.
Any more older new business?
I have one thing, Liz. Um, tonight is-
Go ahead.
Tonight is officially Bill's last meeting with us, so I'd just like to thank him for his service to the zoning board of appeals and to the town.
Thank you, Bill.
Sorry to take you off, Bill.
Thank you for learning experience, I, uh, I didn't know my term was up, so I got too late to, uh, to get on the ballot, so... But, uh, I'm still learning.
Would you like to learn to write?
Learn something with you guys, so, every meeting, so...
You can be a writer.
Yeah, I'll try that, but, uh, like I say, it's, uh, I think it'd take like another two years before I'm up to speed with you guys, it's been there a while. So, I, uh, I just think, we just voted on it, I think I actually screwed up on my voting early too, I don't think I really knew exactly what the question at hand was, so I might have misspoke, but...
That's alright.
But I'm learning, have a good night. If I don't, uh, see you again, it's been very nice meeting all of you and I'll see you around town, hopefully.
Nope. Bye, guys.
Thank you, Bill.
Um, alright, is anybody, any other older new?
No.
No, alright, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I second.
Alright, let's take a roll call, so, Tom?
Yes.
Mi, uh, Mike?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself is yes, so the motion passes and we are adjourned.
Alright.
Are we scheduled again?
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.